Well, I got the droid. That's all right. I like the BlackBerry better. I leave this phone quick. My fingers are too big. Yeah, I finally got used to that BlackBerry. Good evening. Welcome to Peoria City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, May 21. Would you please rise and join us in a moment of silence? And then the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Patana.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Barrett.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Ames.
Here.
Councilmember Patana.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Carlott.
Here.
And Councilmember Leon.
Here.
Thank you. This is the final call to submit speaker request forms. The forms can be found in the lobby. Throw them out, give them to the clerk. We will call upon you at the appropriate time. The first item up is a presentation. It's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor Barrett. I'll stand down here at the custom presentation spot. And if I could ask Claudia to come forward. I know she had asked that I not make a big deal out of her leaving, but, you know, this is one time I'm not going to listen to her. Claudia, as you all know, is leaving the city of Peoria and going to the city of San Antonio, Texas, where she will become, I want to get this right, the employee relations administrator for the city of San Antonio. And it's a great move for her and her career, but we're going to be losing one of our key leadership team people. And I want to say a few things about her experience, and I have a plaque for you, Claudia. Claudia has started her career with the city of Peoria as a human resources consultant overseeing leadership development program for the city. She joined the city manager's office four years ago and is the former chair and active member of the city's diversity committee. This committee's work brought us the "Paving the Way" film series and presentations at City Hall by the Tuskegee Airmen, Holocaust survivor Bernard Shear, president of the National Negro Baseball Association Museum, and many others. And Claudia had an instrumental role in bringing each of those speakers and events of the diversity committee. She was also instrumental in coordinating the city's civic engagement initiative, particularly PACE. And those conferences have included such speakers as Laddie Coore, Michael Crowe, Eddie Basha, Kevin Johnson, and John Quinones, and many others. Claudia has established and strengthened our relationship in the not-for-profit arena with community groups such as the Peoria Chamber of Commerce, Thunderbird School of Global Management, the Asian Chamber of Commerce, and the Japanese-American Citizens League. She's also served as the interim human resources director for several months last year. And as you recall, during that period of time, we had three key leadership team recruitments underway: the human resources director, fire chief, and community services director, among many other things that she successfully did during that interim human resources director period. She also has served on the state Sister Cities Board and was recently elected to the International City Management Association Board on International Hispanic Network. And Claudia has been one of four-person team that has led the Women Leading Government Chapter in the West Valley. And those are just a small number of the things that Claudia has done in her leadership role. And we're really going to miss your leadership a lot. And I have a plaque, of course. And the plaque says, "Presented to Claudia Luhann in recognition of eight years of outstanding service and leadership as assistant to the city manager, City of Peoria, Arizona, 2005 to 2013."
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council, and everybody in this chamber. I'll try to get through this without getting a little bit emotional. The last eight years, it's been my pleasure to work under the leadership of this council and the leadership of city manager Carl Swenson. The accomplishments that were just read and attributed to me didn't happen alone. They happened by working with the leadership team that's here this evening and the many individuals in this organization who give 110% every day for the residents of this city. I thank you all. I'll take what I've learned here, the friendships I've made, and the many memories with me on my new journey. Best of luck to you and to all of you in the organization. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is the consent agenda. The consent agenda, all items that are listed with the C. They've been considered by the, they're considered to be routine or have been discussed by the council in the past. They will be... We're going to do them all at once unless somebody asks for one to be pulled. You have any requests to pull an item? Seeing none, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Ames, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Please vote. Clerk will record the vote. Thank you. It is unanimous. Next is the regular agenda, new business, 15R public hearing liquor license, Good China, located 8987 West Olive Avenue. This is a request for a restaurant liquor license, Series 12, staff report.
Mayor and council, properties were posted in accordance with Arizona statutes. All reviewing departments recommend approval. All fees were paid and no comments were received from the public.
Thank you. I now open the public hearing. This is a public hearing for liquor license application for Good China, located 8987 West Olive Avenue. Would anyone in the audience care to comment? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, questions, comments? Could I have a motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Patana, seconded by Mr. Leon. Please vote. Clerk will record the vote. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Next is 16R public hearing fiscal year 2014 reclaimed water rate adjustment.
Mayor Barrett, this is the first of several items related to our financial management and budget adoption process, and I'll turn it over to Katie Gregory, who will present this item and the other follow-up items.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Tonight, as Carl mentioned, we are going to be going through three presentations related to the fiscal year 2014 budget. The first one is on reclaimed water rate. As you, reclaimed water rate is wastewater that's treated to a high level and is used in landscape irrigation or to recharge groundwater aquifers. It's intended for non-potable uses such as landscape irrigation in our city parks and in various golf courses. And it promotes sustainability and water conservation through recycling and reducing potable water demand. Currently, the city has two reclaimed systems, one in the northern portion of the city, which serves primarily Vestancia Community HOA and the golf courses, and the other is in the southern portion of the city through the Butler Water Reclamation Facility. And this provides reclaimed water to the City Hall campus, Centennial Park, and the Future Pioneer Park. There are a number of factors that influence reclaimed water rates. First, obviously, the production, the cost associated with producing the water and the demands on that system. Cost drivers such as cap water rates and the ongoing maintenance and replacement of existing infrastructure all influence those rates. And in addition to that, obviously, customer impacts are important as there are two primary customers for reclaimed water currently, which is the city of Peoria and Vestancia HOA and golf courses. As council may recall, last year, you approved a phased-in approach to the reclaimed water rate, adjusting the rate by 20 cents over two years. These adjustments are the first increases to the rate since it was first adopted in 2006. And beginning July 1st, the fiscal year 2014 reclaimed water rate will be $1.25 per thousand gallons. On April 9th, council adopted the notice of intention, which basically was our notice to the public that we were looking at adjusting water rates, reclaimed water rates. We had a rate report on file at that time with the city clerk's office. Tonight is the public hearing for that. And council, we're asking that council will adopt the reclaimed water rate from $1.15 to $1.25 per thousand gallons. If council adopts that, then effective July 1st, we would have new reclaimed water rates.
Thank you. At this point in time, I'm going to open the public hearing. This is a public hearing on the fiscal year 2014 reclaimed water rate adjustment. Would anyone in the audience care to comment on this item? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Counsel action, discussion, and possible action to adopt the rate. Questions, comments? Ms. Carlott?
Thank you. First of all, it's a positive that we are expanding our reclaimed water system within the city of Peoria because it's not only beneficial for the customers of that water system, but it's also beneficial for the long-term sustainability and use of our water. Reusing it, it only makes sense. This rate is less than the potable water rate. And the fact that we decided to phase in the increase to get it up to the standard where it needs to be to pay for itself, I think, was very prudent. And so I appreciate the method that we used, increasing it just little by little as the three years have gone on. And so I support this rate increase, and I support the way that we came about doing it to get it to the standard where it needs to be. So with that, I would make a motion to approve this.
Could I have a second? They move and second it. This is fiscal year 2014 reclaimed water rate adjustment. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, please vote. Clerk will record the vote. Thank you. We have a member absent, Mr. Rivera. Otherwise, it was unanimous. Next is 17R fiscal year 2014 through 2023 capital improvement program.
Thank you, Mayor, again. Counsel, as you recall, staff provided this council with a comprehensive review of the fiscal year 2014 through fiscal year 2023 capital improvement program during the council budget study sessions. And tonight, I'll provide a brief summary of the proposed 10-year capital plan. The CIP is a 10-year balanced plan that addresses projects that are needed or will be needed across a broad spectrum of areas. It's a dynamic plan in which each year, a great deal of effort is put into updating to ensure that not only our critical needs are being met, but also that the cost, scope, and timing of all projects are coordinated throughout. Staff identify and prioritize projects, estimate project costs, determine available resources, and balance those project requests within those available resources, ultimately submitting a recommended program to the city council. One key consideration is that the city's ability to fund the ongoing operations and maintenance costs associated with each project. And as such, the project operating impacts are incorporated into our long-range forecasts each year. Putting together a 10-year plan does prove to be a year-round process. However, it's most involved from September through April when the city manage, when, September when projects are submitted and April when the city manager brings forward his recommended plan for council review. Not only does it provide a schedule of planned improvement, it also identifies funding sources for the projects over the entire period. And tonight, we're going to be asking council to adopt the proposed fiscal year 14 through fiscal year 23 capital improvement program. Some key themes that went into developing this year's program include incorporating projects that address council policy goals and in continuing to fund and invest in preserving and maintaining our existing infrastructure, as well as delivering what we call a full project. As mentioned before, it is a balanced plan because we've identified funding sources based on reliable revenues to support both the one-time capital investments as well as the ongoing operating costs of every project in the program. The 10-year program totals $524 million. And as you can see, there are multiple funding sources that support this plan. And the turquoise is the city's operating funds, which include the use of one-time funds above, or, excuse me, the use of one-time funds, fund balance to support targeted improvements within the community, such as our community works program and our streets maintenance program and the sports complex improvements. The purple slice is our development impact fees, which are used to finance large growth-related projects. This amount also reflects a number of impact fee credit obligations for infrastructure dedications that are made by major developers in the city. And as you can see, we'll continue to utilize geo-bonds for a significant portion of general government projects. And geo-bonds are paid for through the city's secondary property tax. Peoria's plan addresses projects that are needed or will be needed across a number of category types. The largest category of improvements is water, where we've had an additional, where we have added additional treatment capacity to serve the growing needs for water in our northern Peoria. The streets is another significant category reflecting a series of important roadway and intersection improvements planned over the next several years, including Lake Pleasant Parkway and the Aguafria Truck Road Reliever, which are either currently under construction or will be very soon. And the city is making significant investments in the quality of life amenities for our citizens. And added in the plan this year is the third community park to be located in northern Peoria. This chart shows reductions in the overall size of the 10-year capital plan. And this drop is related to the completion of a number of large projects, but also is related to our near 50% reduction in the assessed valuation over the past four years. However, we continue to be able to maintain a healthy capital program that addresses those council and community priorities without making any adjustments to our property tax rates. Tonight, we're asking council to adopt the proposed fiscal year 14 through fiscal year 23 capital program. And then on June 4th, we'll be asking council to approve the first year of the 10-year capital program as part of the overall fiscal year 14 adopted budget. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Ames? We do have an electronic system, by the way. Don't forget.
Is that in the Capitol? Yeah, I think this is a good capital improvement program. And a lot of discussions with the council, and we had citizens come together when we decided on doing additional bonding. And these are the kinds of capital improvements they wanted to see. So I'm happy to see that, happy to see us moving forward, and happy to see that these things happen over the years. It'll be good for all the citizens.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Could I have a motion?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Carlott, seconded by Mr. Year 2014 through 2023 capital improvement program. Please vote. Clerk will record the vote. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Last item is 18R 10 annual budget fiscal year 2014.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Once again, this is the last presentation, and it is the tentative budget adoption. This is the first in the series of steps to the formal budget adoption process for fiscal year 14. And as you're aware, the tentative budget really is what sets the maximum appropriation for the fiscal, appropriation amount for fiscal year 14. I'm pushing the wrong button here. Throughout the year, council has been provided a number of updates on the city's financial condition, the economic development initiatives, and utility rate recommendations. The council had, in addition, the council had an opportunity to fully review the fiscal year 2014 budget during the council budget study sessions in April and early May. And at these meetings, council provided feedback to staff regarding a number of areas and identified some changes to the fiscal year 14 budget, such as adding some one-time funding for special events, tuition reimbursement, live-fire extinguisher program, IT program review, and additional supplies for the human services coordinator position. Those all have been incorporated as part of the tentative budget. As a quick recap, when we budget in Peoria, there are two different processes, an operating process, which supports the day-to-day operations, and a capital process, which you heard earlier, supports our one-time capital needs. Our approach to the fiscal year 14 budget was to develop a thoughtful spending plan that is responsive to the council's goals and also maintains our short- and long-term financial stability. The budget continues to be a hold-the-line budget. However, it did include, or does include, a small number of additions in key areas that both address goals and maintain service levels. But having said of that, there are no service level reductions proposed in this budget. And as always, we continue to focus on providing the most efficient and effective services we can for our citizens. The proposed fiscal year 2014 budget totals $468 million. And this slide shows the tentative budget by category. It's largely split between capital and operating. It includes $42.2 million in debt service, which supports primarily our capital program, and also includes about $42.5 million in contingency. And just as a reminder, in Peoria, we budget contingency appropriation in various funds to give us the budget authority to spend on unforeseen items or emergencies or mid-year budget adjustments, those types of items. Only the council has the authority to approve the use of these contingency funds. This is the, a look at the budget from a historical perspective. And you can see the fiscal year 2014 budget is slightly lower than last year by about 1.08%. This reduction is mainly from our first year of the capital program, which did see about a 9.6% reduction in fiscal year 14 from fiscal year 13. So the results, the fiscal year 2014 tentative budget is a balanced budget that reflects our sound financial principles and does not require the use of reserves, maintains our core services, and focuses resources on council priorities and community needs. It includes some modest additions to maintain service levels and address the operating commitments that we make through our capital improvement program. And it does not require any sales or property tax increases, nor does it include any utility rate adjustments with the exception of the small reclaimed adjustment council just reviewed. And finally, the budget includes resources to complete and support a number of our very important capital projects throughout the city. So this evening begins the formal budget adoption process. And tonight, we're asking council to adopt the fiscal year 14 tentative budget, again, just to set that maximum appropriation expenditure limitation for the year. Staff plans to bring forward on the final budget for public hearing and adoption on June 4th. And on that same evening, we'll hold a public hearing on the property tax levy to be formally adopted by council on June 18th. And that's the end of the presentation.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Mr. Rivera?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Mr. Kemp and Mr. Swenson. Is this a good time to make any changes to the budget? I mean, proposed changes?
Yes, Vice Mayor, if you had a proposed change that you wanted to make to the tentative budget, now would be a time to make that.
Okay. Mr. Swenson, as I mentioned, I want to make a change in one-time funds. In September, on the 21st and 22nd of September, I'll be working on organizing the Fiesta Peoria. I had initially requested $20,000 for the event. The event is now going to be a two-day event that will include soccer and baseball tournament. And it will be hosted at the new community park. And I would like to request consideration from the council, an increase of up to $35,000. We may not need to use everything, but I want to make a request of up to $35,000 to help fund the event. Thank you.
Mr. Ames?
Yeah, I would like to first respond to, when you said 35, is that in addition to the 20?
No, it'll be...
15, you're talking about, increase of 15. Okay. I have something else I wanted to speak about in terms of the budget. As you heard me speak, I like the capital budget. And I do like a lot that's in the operating budget. But I do have a concern that there's no consideration for the taxpayer in this tentative budget. And I did propose a small increase in the grocery food tax. That was first agreed to by the council, and then later, when staff presented some ways we could adjust, they seemed to be, you know, kind of things that no one would want to give up. So that was given up. But my larger concern is, as we move beyond the Great Recession, as we see it in our rearview mirror, I'm concerned that the city will continue to spend all revenues it receives on growing the city bureaucracy. And I'm concerned about that. We certainly need police, fire, park, and recreation and other services that all of us citizens, including myself, need and enjoy. But we need, but we don't want to start building a bloated staff. I'm not saying we have that now. And when we do our budgets, I believe we need to consider taxes, too. And I know we're not raising taxes, but as we grow, it's not good to have a bureaucracy bigger than you need to meet the, to meet the needs of citizens. And in fact, we saw in our recent city survey, the citizen satisfaction with our services improved significantly compared to four years ago when the staff was noticeably larger. So I'm concerned, and I'm, as it is tentative at this point, I'm going to vote no on this budget because we haven't taken into account looking at the taxpayer. And I'm hoping that in the future, we do. That's one of the things we need to look at. We can't always balance the budget by, you know, we have so much revenue now, we need to spend it all, and we need to just grow the staff. We need to look at the needs of citizens, who are the ones who pay for, pay for all of this. And it is their city, so we need to take that into account. And I get, after this, there is a public hearing. So if the tentative budget does pass, which I expect it will, citizens will get a chance to express their views on it. And I've just expressed one of my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other requests to speak? Suggestions for how we handle this? Should he make a motion?
Yeah, I think that would be the best approach, Mayor Barrett, would be for Vice Mayor Rivera to make a motion looking for an addition of one-time money. And I understand the request is one-time money for this event. And then Ms. Gregory can respond. If the council chooses to honor that request, Ms. Gregory can describe how it would be funded.
Okay. Mr. Rivera?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to increase the funding for Fiesta Peoria from $20,000 to $35,000. As I mentioned, it's up to $35,000. We may not use all the funds, so that's my motion.
Do I have a second? Moved and seconded by Mr. Leon. Questions and comments? Ms. Carlott?
The equity...
Before we do, where would we find the money? I'm sorry. I'll come back to you. I promise.
Just one quick point of clarification. The first $20,000 that the council approved was related to in-kind services. And my understanding is that you want to increase the in-kind services by $15,000 to a total of $35,000. Without knowing exactly where those in-kind services would apply, you know, I think that the option to look at, we'd first like to look at those one-time items, maybe that council brought forward as items to have available in the event that there are actual unbudgeted costs or costs that exceed our ability to cover it in a one-time manner, or, excuse me, in an in-kind manner.
So if I can be a little clearer on that. I believe at the last budget closer session, Mr. Rivera, you had indicated that you were withdrawing one of your one-time requests, that being for some additional money for tuition reimbursement. In that case, I believe there are funds available to cover the $15,000.
Thank you. Ms. Carlott, now.
Okay. From what I'm understanding is you're wanting to increase the budget or change the funding for a more downtown... for more downtown, more southern portion of the city events. And a concern that I have had for a long time, and continued to have during this budget session, was the inequity of those kinds of events and services available for citizens in other parts of the city. And so, you know, to take even more funds at this late date and add them to downtown is something I can't support. I mean, if we've got an additional $15,000, then let's put it where there is not currently services for citizens. Why would we put it on top of services that we already have? So for that reason, I find that it would just add to the inequity that we currently have, and so that doesn't seem fair, and I would not support that.
Thank you. Mr. Rivera?
Thank you, Mayor. In response, Councilwoman Carlat, I recognize and I respect your comment about the inequity, and if there are any other funds, and you want some funding for an event up north, I'll support you on that. So I respect that. But second of all, the 35,000, the possible 35,000, will go towards an event that's going to cost more than that, and I'm going to be working very hard in the next couple of months to raise money to help offset costs, so that we have an event that is mostly paid by private sponsors, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ames.
Yes, didn't we do some one-time funds for events in other districts as well? And what was that amount? Was that seven?
Are you referring to doing some events in districts? Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, including like the Palaverdi district.
Yes. There was some one-time funding as part of that special events, the $180,000 that we allocated for special events. I believe it was about $28,000.
I think this event that Councilwoman Rivera is putting on will be a large event, and the Palaverdi district is right next to this district here. And so I think we could, for this one-time year, we could move those funds, the Palaverdi funds, so that would cover a certain portion of it.
Yes, I believe that was about $7,000 that was for each district, somewhere in that range.
And if not needed, we could move that funds up north, because my district on the top touches up north.
Other questions or comments? I'm going to vote no on this, too. It's not because the money's not available. What we have here is an event that was supposed to be covered by sponsors. Don't kid yourself, in-kind is real money. And for, I'm not taking a cheap shot here, for one council member to expend $35,000 on one event that was supposed to be covered by sponsorships and not cost the city is too much. It's too large an expenditure. I raised the issue during the earlier budget hearings. It was like $29,000 last year. The in-kind costs that go are expenditures that the city makes. We don't write a check. But police are out there, or they pick up the trash, or whatever they do, these guys are getting paid overtime. So it is real money being expended, even though it's called in-kind. And I think this thing's running away with itself, so I'm going to vote no. In fact, could we, would you restate your, raise it from 20 to 35?
Yes.
In-kind for fiestas in Peoria?
Yes, I would like to make a motion, Mayor and council, to increase the funding for Fiesta Peoria from 20 to 35,000, up to 35,000, and want to work as hard as I can so that we don't have to expand all the 35,000.
Okay. Well, the motion was made in seconds. I was just repeating it for the vote. No more comments? Can we vote? Sorry, I'm a little bit behind the curve here. There are two noes, myself and Ms. Carlat, or five yeses. That's it. Now it's call to the public on non-agenda items?
Mayor, you have the tentative budget pending before you as amended, so you need to finish it.
More than 35,000.
Okay, yeah, it is. All right, we're back to the tentative annual budget fiscal year 2014. Questions or comments? Could I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Carlat, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Please vote. Clerk will record the votes. There are two noes, Mr. Ames and Mr. Rivera, the rest are five yeses. Next is call to public on non-agenda items. I do not have any speaker's forums, so we go to reports from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Barrett. Just one brief item this evening. It's an informational item from John Sefton, our community services director, alerting you to the fact that we have received a $25,000 grant that will help us with water use reduction at three of our parks, Terramar, Sonoran Mountain Ranch, and Monroe. And that's all I have this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, reports from the city council. Mr. Jones, you're up.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just like to make a couple of thoughts. On the 9th, we had a employees appreciation lunch. It turned out great. Ron Ames and myself and Tony were service, and also city manager and a lot of our staff members were there. It was just great. Everybody enjoyed themselves, and the food was tremendous. So I just want to thank city manager for having this appreciation dinner for the employees. Also, I'd like to mention that the last time I didn't mention, but I did want to mention today, at the community center, we had a meeting for Saul, for senior citizens. The chief was there, and a couple of his officers, lieutenants were there, and deputy chief. It was great, and I'll tell you, a lot of these senior citizens enjoy it. They ask questions, and they get the answers. And when the police department talks to them and tell them what to look for, there is a wide open. So it's great, and I'd like to see more of these around Peoria, and I would like to see one or two over in the Pine District. We only had one so far, but I know it's a big city, and for the chief to get around to all of them is kind of rough, but they do a great job for the senior citizens, and I think it's great that we have these. Also, on May the 16th, we had a celebration on Wagner Place 2, and it was just great. There was, if you haven't been down there yet, they redid the whole thing, and it looks just fabulous. Phase one of phase two is all done, and I just can't wait to see phase three go. I understand we don't have the money, but I'm sure that eventually, we will get the money to do phase three, because downtown is starting to look a lot better than it did. It's getting there. The other thing I want to mention, Tony and I went to a breakfast at Altaloma. It was a breakfast for all of the people that donated for Cinco de Mayo, and I donated at Altaloma, and also Tony did, so we were invited to the breakfast. It was a good breakfast, and we enjoyed it, and I just want to congratulate on Altaloma. I don't know how much money they made, but I'm sure they made a few dollars. The other thing I have is I haven't got the pamphlet with me, but I did go to a badge painting on firefighters. We had a lot of firefighters that got promoted. Whatever the position was, they got promoted. It was great to see that. Also, we had firefighters, new firefighters, that just became firefighters and also got their badge. It was great to see all these new young kids becoming firefighters, and it's also great to see the old timers get promotions, which they deserve. The other thing, I went to a pause reception. Ron Ames was there. All the schools, and they all got certificates for doing a great job. It's called Peoria Education Foundation, and teachers and the young kids got certificates, and also some of these kids got scholarships. It was just great, and it's always good to see kids in Peoria, and I teach in Peoria in education, do a great job. God bless each and every one of you, and God bless America. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Carlat?
Thank you. This past weekend was very tragic for firefighters and police officers in the city of Phoenix. One of each of those servicemen were killed in the line of duty, and one of them, the firefighter, Brad Harper, was a resident of Peoria. It's a very, very sad day, very tragic, and the services are going to be this Friday and this Saturday at Christ Church of the Valley on Happy Valley and 67th Avenue. So if anybody from the public would like to go and pay their respects, you can call my office and find out when those services are. We'll be happy to share that with you. And our thoughts and prayers go out to the families of those individuals. Thank you.
Mr. Edwards.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ames?
Yeah, to follow up a little bit, the tragic deaths of policemen and firemen in Phoenix, the fireman, that was a hit-and-run, and the legislature recently passed because of Joey, young boy killed here in Peoria, and I and some others worked with the legislature, including Steve Kemp. We passed Joey's law. So that family would be happy to know that after this person who did this hit-and-run killed, this person serves his time, it's 10 years before he can be considered again for a driver's license. In the past, you could be serving time, and it was, was it five years? And it counted while you were in prison, like you could drive anyway. So that's a good thing that we passed a law like that. Those hit-and-run, they're really outrageous and terrible. I did attend the dinner and lunch, I guess, for all of the staff, and boy, I think almost all of you showed up. I got to serve the meat lasagna, and Carlo got to serve the meatless lasagna, and Carlo didn't get very many takers. I got most of the takers with the meat lasagna. But that was a nice event, and our staff does need to be honored that way. And I did attend, as Carlo mentioned, the scholarship awards for Peoria, Unified Peoria District students. That was at Theater Works. It was an excellent event, and really worthy students who have gone above and beyond in things that they have done, and challenges that they've overcome. And they got scholarships, and all of them have definite plans of what they're going to do, and the colleges, or junior colleges that they're going to, they were all seniors that are graduating. Maybe they have already graduated now, or very close. That's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patana. Mr. Rivera?
Thank you, Mayor. Had an opportunity to sit in for our mayor at a Diamondbacks game. Had an opportunity to spend some time with our chief of police, some of the members of our police department, and some of our local students in our Peoria schools, and we had a good time. We had an opportunity to interact and meet former Diamondbacks player, Luis Gonzalez, so we had a good time. And I want to thank the chief and the police department for doing an excellent job. And lastly, want to briefly touch on a point, or a topic, that was our first discussion of the day, and I'm referring to Mrs. Lujan. I have some comments that I want to share about her. Her and I have history. I had an opportunity to work with her as not only an intern, but as a coworker. And during my time in human resources, I had an opportunity to meet a lot of new employees, meet current employees, and I can't think of any other employee during my time as an employee and as a council member who has impacted this organization on issues that are important to her and others. So I congratulate you on your move to San Antonio, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you. And to that point, Claudia, I talked to San Antonio today. They've changed their minds. We wish you the best of luck, and you will be missed, sincerely. I only have one other thing to add. On Monday is Memorial Day. They're having a ceremony in Antana Lakes at 8:00 AM. Everyone is welcome to attend. With that, we are adjourned from the city council, and we will come together again as a distanzia, distanzia community facilities district board meeting. Clerk, please call the roll. We're chairman and directors.
Chairman Barrett?
Here.
Vice Chairman Rivera?
Here.
Board Member Ames?
Here.
Board Member Patana?
Here.
Board Member Edwards?
Here.
Board Member Carlat?
Here.
And Board Member Leone.
Here.
Thank you. The first, this is the final call to Smith Speaker, request forms, if anybody's going to stay for this. You can find them in the lobby, fill them out, give them to clerk. We'll address them when the time comes. First item is the consent agenda. Consent agenda, all items that are marked with a C, they're considered to be routine or been previously reviewed by the district board. Questions or comments? Hearing none. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Rivera, seconded by Director Patana. This is the consent agenda, which is all items marked with a C. Please vote. Clerk will record the votes. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. Next is the regular agenda, 25R, proposed budget and tax levy estimates for fiscal year 14 and established public hearing date. I guess you're up.
Thanks, sir. Tonight, the board's considering approving the proposed distanzia community facilities district budget and tax levy estimates for the district for fiscal year 2014. You're also establishing a public hearing date of June 18th for the budget and tax levy. The proposed budget provides for an operating and capital budget of $28.5 million, which includes $11.5 million in unspent bond proceeds to be carried over for future capital projects. The budget also proposes to maintain the current tax rate of $2.10. It also anticipates the tax to be generated by the tax levy at $2.2 million. The developer contribution for debt service in the upcoming year is estimated to be $3.3 million per the standby contribution agreement, so the total debt service, including both the developer contribution as well as the tax levy, is estimated at $5.5 million. Staff recommends adoption of resolution 2013-01 that approves the proposed budget and the tax levy estimate for fiscal year 2014. It also establishes a public hearing date of June 18th on the budget and the tax levy.
Thank you. Questions? Seeing none, could I have a motion?
Second.
Moved by, we're Director, Director Carlat, seconded by Director Ames. Please vote. Clerk, record your vote. Thank you very much. That's unanimous. We have nothing on the call of the public, so we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
I know it.